All right. I'm going to call the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for December 15th, 2022, open at 5:36 PM. I'll do rule call. Mr. Ablyn?
Here.
Mr. Ballas?
Here.
Mr. Cobb?
Present.
Ms. Huesman?
Here.
Ms. Piranha's excuse, Mr. Schmitz will be here soon. Mr. Mel?
Here.
Joe Ward, Javier Rodriguez, and Naina Williams for city staff. Agenda item one, discussion and possible recommendations to the mayor and council, consideration of the updated development standards for Bisbee Arizona Historic District. The Design Review Board continues to set the standards for clarity and practicality in making the work of the board easier along with the applicants. These new standards provide property owners and the board with concise information and realistic choices for appropriate rehabilitation and new construction. Does anybody have any discussion? Yes, Mr. Ablyn?
Okay. So, for our last meeting, I had an opportunity to review this, and I've also had an opportunity to speak with several architects regarding this. And the underlying common denominator seems to be that there's a growing concern that DRB is overstepping their boundaries.
Okay, so we're not going to?
Oh.
We're, no, what I'm going to say is, we're not going to discuss the DRB. We're not here to discuss what they do or what they don't do. All we're here to discuss is these right here. Is these standards, not what they do or what they don't do, but just the standards.
Okay, so?
So if you have comments or suggestions or updates regarding the standards, or things that you would want to change or want to remove? You let me know, but we're not going to discuss what the board does or doesn't do.
Okay. So, that said then, let me scroll down here to my notes. It would appear that there are some contradictions to which it limits the authority of the building inspector, and there seems to be some conflicts there. And I can cite some examples.
Okay.
Is that more appropriate?
If you have specific page numbers, that would be helpful too.
I do, I just?
Okay.
So, can I just, these are my notes.
Uh huh.
Can I just read these and you guys?
Yeah.
So, in general, Chapter 2 specifies actual plans as a requirement. That needs to be further defined. This refers to CDs. It's inappropriate because at this stage of the project, we're only at a programming stage. It's unreasonable to demand plans when the likelihood of approval is tenuous at best. Item 7, Page 13, makes meeting attendance mandatory, does not accommodate out-of-state owners, and the city cannot compel someone to do so. What are these property owners to do? Page 14 gives DRB authority over structural and stipulates DRB approval for the painting of unpainted brick when there is an existing ordinance which forbids the same. Page 15, written specifications for materials, again, not something you do during program and design phase. Item B of that page is vague, shall not imitate, rather hard to do and stay within a historic aesthetic. Volumes, quantification of an interior space, therefore DRB has no purview into interior spaces. Gives DRB authority over foundation type. No, foundations are structural elements which are defined by the loads they are intended to carry. Item C point 1, language gives DRB more authority than the building inspector. This is directly from ordinance and needs to be changed by a city council. Page 18, demolition by neglect, gives DRB authority over the building inspector. Also, this is why there is property maintenance appeals board. Wall design section is vague, DRB should have no purview over retaining walls. Chapter 3, Section A is contradictory, discussing foundation types. Then there's another comment, the entirety of the windows discussion is questionable. Page 29, contradictory and confusing, promotes engineered wood and cement for siding, but this allows wood grain. Again, from a typical observation distance, the material is indistinguishable from wood. Page 31 specifies a code violation in railing height. Page 33 classifies stuck as undesirable, yet promotes it on Page 28 and 31. Sliding windows, again, disallowed. The whole section concerning photovoltaic panels should be stricken. Cardinal orientation and angle of inflammation are critical to this technology's usefulness and efficiency. Satellite dishes pose the same argument. Page 36, cables and wires, meter locales are under the jurisdiction of APS, not DRB. Another feasibility issue should be placed underground. Who's paying for it? Chapter 4 appears to be redundant, gives DRB authority over placement of HVAC and other mechanicals. Shall not replicate. Volume, cables and wires, same issues as noted earlier. So, I'm not here to be argumentative.
No.
By no stupid imagination, I consulted with a couple of other outside architects and some local architects to have them review this.
But I'm only going to say this?
Yeah.
That some of the things that you pointed out are specifically from our code. They're not something the DRB just came up with. The, um, let's see, the, shoot, what page was it? The demolition by neglect, straight out of the code.
I don't know the code.
Right.
I rely on the expertise of Mr. Ward and his constituents, so, again, I just?
Right. And the other thing is?
There is a tremendous amount of this that is?
I'm sorry?
It's straight out of the code.
Right.
Okay.
There's a?
And it gives them one source that they can?
Right.
They can reference when they're?
And 3 and 4 are actually two different sections even though they're similar items. 3 is dealing with, um, 3 is dealing with residential. So basically, it's dealing with residential only. 4 is for multi-use family homes and commercial. The reason we separated it that way is because it needs to be, what one would do for the commercial district would not necessarily be done in a single-family residence. So that has to be separate. That's why some of those things, yes, are repeated, and they are done. And regarding the cable wires, all it says is whenever possible. They don't have any jurisdiction. It just lets them know if they have new construction, that they do need to consult with whoever, but it's whenever possible, if they can put it under the ground or in a non-conspicuous way. Same with the HVAC system. They're not, they're not saying where you can put it. They're just saying, this is what we would like to see. And it's not saying that they have to have it out of the way. There are some that are on the side of a house, that are on the top of the house, that are, sometimes there are even the little window units in the front of the house. They're not saying that, they're just saying whenever possible. So they're not mandating that it be this way or that way. And again, with the windows, the windows are subjective. They don't, everything, if you'll notice on page, let's see which page it was, on page 27, I think it may be the page before that, hold on just one second. Oning windows are, requires DRB, which all we're saying is, here are the undesirable. But if you come to the, you have to come to the DRB and give us, give them the reason of why you want to use those. Let's say that that is, is something, I think the oning windows for like bathrooms, that's acceptable, but you have to come to the DRB regardless whether it's accepted to be in the bathroom or not. DRB just wants to make sure that that's where you're putting it, and then they can approve it.
Our former design guidelines prohibited oning windows.
Right.
Which wasn't a good fit either.
Right. So, but now we're saying, if you would like an oning window, come to the DRB. Give us exact specifications, tell us exactly where it's going, and the reason behind it. And the same thing with vinyl windows and things like that. It's just going to be on a case-per-case basis. The board's not limiting what you, what they can use. We just want them to be able to see, here are examples that we, that we've gotten from the Secretary of Interior. These are the examples. Here are the examples we would like not to see, but we're not saying that they're automatically going to be shut down. We just want them to go before the board. Same thing with the siding. There are specific sidings that cannot be used, I believe, Joe, like T-111, that can't be used. I'm trying to find that page.
So, let me ask you, if I can, while you're looking that up?
Yeah.
How do we define between an opinion of what we would, because you present a window, and I'm just giving you an example, we present a window to DRB. What you're saying is, DRB would like to see this.
Right. And again, even if the DRB says no, there's the Board of Adjustments.
That, I just want to make sure, because again?
And again, the Board of Adjustments will be given these rules. They will be given the zoning code, and then they will be given a staff report, and what, you know, we have to follow the code regardless of what the DRB says, or even what the Board of Adjustment said. They have to follow the code, so they can't?
Kind of like the Secretary of Interior standards, which to, to the lemon, I mean, to me, I never figured out why they do it the way they do, because they, they're so, well, if you, you know, we recommend that you do it this way, and that's, the wording is really soft.
Right.
It's not defined very well, but, and so that winds up tanking or, you know, crossing over into our standards the same way, because these are, of course, based upon the Secretary of Interior standards.
Right.
So I think just from my perspective, what you're saying is that there is no conflict in code requirements based on these documents?
No.
That in your opinion, if somebody were to argue that this is a code violation, you would be able to substantiate to the contrary?
I would be able to say, this is exactly where it is in the code. Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Fine, I just, again, I'm just acknowledging.
Oh, no, no, that's what I'm saying, is, we'll be able to say, this is exactly, and that's why the second item is different than this, is because this is every code that deals with these standards that are listed. And you'll see, there's only, I think, one section or two sections that we actually added in there, or added to, for that, because that, we didn't have it defined, or we didn't have it where the building inspector, or actually, we call him now the building official in this document, and we're changing that throughout the code. But we want them to know that this is what we're looking at. But again, regardless of whether they disapprove it or not, that applicant is, has the right to go to the Board of Adjustments and present their case. Now, I'm not saying that they would win or they wouldn't win. It would just be based on the merits of the code.
Okay. And that would go back to what the discussion I was starting, but that's not relevant here at this meeting.
Right. So, and also too, the solar panels?
Mike, I think that is relevant to this meeting.
It is not. It's not.
Okay.
What they do and what, what they do or don't do has nothing to do with what you're deciding right now.
Then why do we even have standards? If they get to choose?
Because we need a document for them to work off of, but we're not going to discuss what they do or don't do.
Is there a, is there a section that talks about their mission?
Well, that's why I said in here, it's their, their goal, their new standards are to provide the property owners and the board with concise information, because the other standards didn't really have concise information. It conflicted with some of the zoning codes that we had, or they weren't up to where we were, we're now with the zoning codes. The things with the solar energy devices, that's straight out of the zoning code. So there's nothing that we can change regarding that. All we did was, we took what was in the code and added it to this document.
Again, my, my point for referencing is, is not to be subjective, it's to be objective. So if?
Right.
Building officials?
He has final?
And your area of expertise?
Right.
One could substantiate that all you have to do is reference code, such an article, et cetera, et cetera, then obviously, that trumps anything that's an opinion or something that's subjective.
Correct. And, and they know that. They know that code has to be met.
Okay.
Yeah.
I mean, I know you put a tremendous amount?
Oh, no, and I don't want you to think that I'm trying to be argumentative about it.
You're not.
I, I hope that's not how I'm coming across. I'm just saying that we tried to make it as, whatever was in the code, that's what we put in these new standards, because the problem was, it wasn't concise, they didn't have something to look at. They were going between this document, the Secretary of Interior, the zoning code, and so on. So what we tried to do, or what I tried to do with Joe's help and the previous planner and the DRB, was to get all of the codes in here referenced, because that's what happened with the originals. The code has changed since then.
Okay. So I would just say in summation, that you are comfortable that any of the questions that I've raised?
Mm-hmm.
Can be trumped or quashed by the fact?
Let me, can I add?
Trump is not the right word.
You have?
Oh, yes, go ahead.
Okay. Mike, the question you asked, your concern, and maybe have not been cleared. So my recommendation, and you went through them so fast, you can keep up.
I'm sorry.
That's fine, that's fine.
Well, I was going to go by them, one by one, but?
I think, Naina said, you know, this is basically what we have, this is basically, we just, you know, rewording or reconfiguring. Maybe my recommendation would be, of all the issues you have, why don't you send an email, I think? I think, just for, just for, for, to basically have someone look at this. So if there is, because I think we just, just here, we're just like giving quick answers, and some of this, Naina may be specific.
Yes.
I think he should write a letter?
Right.
An email, and then maybe get through you, or through the board, or some, and for me, the word official, we no longer use it inspector. I wasn't here the last time, so official, anyone just can go out?
No, it's what, what the Design Review Board wanted to do was, instead of saying building inspector, it's a building official. So it's?
Which is a different title.
Which is just a different title. So it's, let's say Joe's not here, he's technically our building inspector. But then Javier is our building official. So, we just use the word official so that if Javier were to go, Joe's not here, he's on vacation, Javier can still go out and do.
It will not become subjective.
Correct.
If two different people go in?
Right.
You know, depends on how I feel for the day, I'll just say yes or no. So we have to be specific on those, what they can verify.
Right.
To no longer be personal.
It's in the city code, Mel.
Okay.
Yeah.
The building inspector is a building official.
Okay.
Right.
Okay. So I think you should send an email with all this that I brought up?
Yeah.
And let's get some specific answers on those.
And I can answer some of those now here for you.
I think she's trying to answer to the best of her abilities, and maybe there's too much wording, too much issues that were brought up, should be addressed.
In response, I spent a good amount of time, because basically, it was my motion last month?
Oh, yeah.
To review this, and I, a lot of these things, while I am a contractor by trade, I always have to refer to building official inspector to catch all for their opinions.
Right.
I have to refer to architects, a lot of other people, and there were some growing concerns, like, this was an accumulation of a variety of people's input. Again, it's not to be argumentative, it's to establish clarity.
Oh, no, and I hope you didn't know that I didn't mean that.
I would let you know.
Okay, okay, I hope you know, that's not what I meant.
No. And so, to your point, I will forward this email to, to you.
She can bring it in front of the board.
My intention is not to delay the process.
Yes.
All I can tell you is that there, just grant me this, that there is a growing concern as Bisbee continues to evolve, that the DRB is perhaps overreaching, in some cases, their authority. And as a layperson, which I'm not, but as a layperson, they sometimes feel that they're getting misinformation or guided down a path, which then causes undue costs and expenses, only to find out that they then have to circle back to another higher authority, i.e. the Board of Adjustments. So, that involves time.
Right. And that's one of the reasons why this is here. And a lot of it was not just what they wanted to see, it's what was also in the code, that they thought should be in the, in the developmental standards that weren't in the guidelines that we originally had.
Right.
In 1980, because a lot of things have changed since 1980.
Again, I mean, this is, I could give this to Joe, I could give it to the other, that gentleman's name, I forget.
Javier.
Javier.
Right.
You could give it to Mel, and some of these things, you'd probably give, if I give it to three people, you might get four different opinions.
Correct.
And so to the consumer, that can be very challenging and overwhelming and discouraging?
Absolutely.
In an attempt to want to renovate, or whatever it might be. So, that said, I will, I appreciate all the hard work, I will direct an email, I guess, to you.
Direct it to me, and then I will get with Joe, and Javi, and whomever else I need to.
I don't know if that justifies not approving this, that wasn't my intent.
No, I think what you just want is clarification. So I think if you wanted to go forward with it, we can always go forward, if you would like to, if it's the consensus of the board not to, then, you know, it's up to the board.
My constituents, so if I, you know, if they want to move forward and are not voted, then, you know, that's?
Well, no, it's just whatever, whatever this commission would like to do. I'm not, you know, I, we would like to, they would like to get these in place so that there's a more concise standard that they could use, is really all it is.
I have an open question here.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Mike has some legitimate concerns. How difficult is it going to be for us next month to change a section?
Of?
Of the guidelines and the zoning code.
Well, they're actually married up to the zoning code.
I understand that.
If the zoning code changes, then that changes. Mm-hmm.
What's not?
We have, we have to go by what's in the zoning code.
I, I understand that.
Yeah.
What I'm saying is, the windows or the height of the guardrails, which is not the code, 30 inches is not code, right?
Right.
But that's what it says in here. We're going to have to make a change on that, because somebody's must sit there and say at some point?
I think there was a reason why they did, let me see, let me get to that, because there's?
I'm going to choose one as an example.
Oh, no, I know.
Can we pull up the page, Joe?
Yeah. What page is that? Because?
Hold on, can we?
Well, they should be in sync.
Yeah. They are, but what they wanted to say was, and maybe I didn't?
I understand we're going to have to change both of them at the same time.
Right.
Obviously, if we wanted to make a change on something of the guidelines today, we're going to have to change the code, if it's in the code.
Yeah. And that's, and that's not, the 30 inches is not in our zoning code.
Right. But the 30 inches, what page is that?
They're talking railings?
Railings.
Page 31.
Thank you.
Yes.
I'm like, I have looked at this document so much, you'd think I'd know the page numbers by now.
Page 31 specifies, according to some of the people that commented with me, specifies a code violation in railing height. So I think what Mike is saying is that, if we approve this tonight, and we come to find that there is a discrepancy, what are the necessary steps to get this corrected? Is that correct, Mike?
Okay. So what the 30 off the ground level means is the, not the railing itself, but the amount underneath the rail, where the railing starts at the bottom to the ground, is what they were addressing. That when it's no, no higher than a certain amount. Am I correct, Joe? Because that's what I thought that they were saying when we added that. That it had nothing to do with the height of the rail, it was from the bottom.
I do, I do, and part of that.
Okay. I can get that, but I believe it wasn't, it wasn't to go against code about how tall the rail could be. I think it had to do with the ground level and where the railing could start.
Again, to piggyback on what Mike is saying, is that, we approve this this evening?
Yeah.
And as these things evolve, and we continue to scrub this and things come up, if there are some errors or omissions, I'm assuming that these errors or omissions are, it stands to reason, if there's a code that's not correct?
Absolutely.
That these things are then automatically amended and changed, without reinventing the whole wheel.
I don't believe that we have to reinvent the whole wheel.
You know what was, was on that question, 30 inches, I, I do, because we had discussed that having to do with some specifics that they were approving.
Right.
When you've got a porch that is, that is no higher than 30 inches, you don't have to meet the guard requirements.
Correct.
And that's what they're really referencing.
Right. Thank you, Joe. I knew it was something to do with that.
If you fall more than 30 inches, then you have to have the 6-inch guards and the 4-inch?
Well, you can't retire.
And all that kind of?
Absolutely.
Okay, I understand now.
Yeah.
That's, that's what they're referring to.
Yeah, and?
When you read it two, three times.
Yeah.
But it's, it's kind of ambiguous, like, for example.
Yeah. I mean, if you have a specific way you would like to see that, if you have a different wording that you would like to use, we can absolutely do that. That is the wording that they came up with, trying not to be, um?
Send an email.
Because seven people can have the same idea, and seven people have seven different wordings of how that should be said.
There's no argument, there's no argument with any of this, so long as it is not in a violation of the code.
If I may, if you guys are not, like, if you believe, this is what Mike, if you believe that you are uncomfortable, you want to see, like, a response towards some of the issues you raised, you can, because I think Mike was saying, oh, if we, if we go ahead and prove it, we can go back and change. You don't have to, am I right?
They don't have to prove anything tonight.
You can just wait for your answer, wait for any clarification you may have, and then do it, rather than go and change it again.
No, I understand.
If you're going to fix it, then amend it.
Yes.
I know.
If you're going to do fix it, then we need to help. Just wait, you don't have, you're not like?
But no, I don't want you to think that we need to push it through. What I'm saying is that, yes, we did, I did take a lot of time with them and with this and getting everything correct, but I want it to be comfortable for the planning and zoning too. But I just wanted to point out that everything that's in here is from the code, is all I was trying to say.
And I just say this a few last times, is that if, in fact, it is to be the case, and six months down the road, something comes up, and somebody poses the challenge that, wait a minute, that is incorrect, and the first paragraph of the code book always says, it's always subject to?
Right.
And so, right off the bat, even though you've got a book that's this thick, and I've had many experiences, it says it's subject to?
Right.
Then what in God's name are we doing with a book that's 500 pages?
And then all the exceptions.
Yes, and then the exceptions.
And so, I mean, there's a whole course, as both you gentlemen know, on how to read the code book.
Absolutely.
So, again, I, in behalf of Mike and some of the other members, I'd like to move this forward in the spirit of, I'm not a big fan of tabling things.
Right.
We just table, and table, and table, so long as there's a commonality and understanding that if there are some inconsistencies, or there's some things, there is an opportunity to quickly and easily say, you know what? You're right, this was a code violation, that it shouldn't be in the hands of such and such, and we can call a meeting, and within 30 to 45 days, it can completely be amended or changed to properly reflect it, because there's hundreds of idiosyncrasies that are in here, that quite frankly, one can make an argument almost on every single one of them.
Every single one of them.
And I'm just seeing this from two sides. I'm seeing it from the city side, and then I'm seeing it from the consumer side.
That's right.
And the consumer typically has to bear the burden of understanding what the building department already knows.
Correct.
That's, that's just the name of the game, so, I think I've caught on.
Well, I will say this, with the DRB and everything, Joe looks at all of the applications that come in, because?
And that's for another conversation.
Yeah, but I'm just letting you know that if it's not up to code, or if it's something they can't do by code, Joe lets me know, and then we contact them.
Okay.
What? I'm good.
Does anybody else have any comments or questions or concerns?
I'll try to make changes.
I take some comfort in knowing that this isn't carved in stone.
No.
And that there's a, a process for amendment and alteration, because like, on page twenty-five, you know, they show a gambrel roof, on page twenty-six, they show a mansard roof, well, I, I mean, I, I might be a person who loves mansard roofs, but it's good to know that even though the Department of Interior, whoever has said mansard roofs aren't good, if it, if it conforms to what is, is already there, we might want to allow a mansard roof, and I'm glad that there's an option for, they have that flexibility built in.
Right.
So, I'm, I'm happy with that.
Okay, yeah. Mr. Cobb, did you have anything?
I'm sorry?
Did you have anything?
No.
Ms. Sandy, did you have anything you wanted to address?
Uh, no, I'm fine.
Okay.
So, you guys, are they supposed to vote?
Well, they can, somebody can make a motion if they'd like, or we can table it again, or do whatever you would like, I'm, I'm not, it's whatever the commission wants to do as a whole.
I, I just want to make sure, um, you know, I'm one for getting it right as far as we can the first time too, rather than going back and changing and changing, so, if there's something that you're feeling strong enough about that needs to be explored, I think we should do that first. If, if you can live with what we have here until, unless something comes up, then I'm willing to move forward.
Well, I mean, you can also, I think, Joe, couldn't, they review, we could review the, the standards every six months to make sure that it's still up with the code if anything gets changed, correct?
That's an arduous task.
Yeah, but it's a task I've been tasked with before, so.
In answer to your question, the list that I've compiled, as long as this is not going to create a hardship to the building officials and drag this on into perpetuity, okay, there's only about probably twenty items here.
Okay.
I, I would like to send these items to you-
Mm-hmm.
And observe the process as to how you are going to respond to these things.
Okay.
I think that's a very, that's a reason, this is not a list of a hundred things, and since they're all identified and listed exactly where they are, I think, and Joe, this is on you and Javier, I, you always, already have a huge burden, I don't want to add another brick on top of your guys' back, but, to, to your point, this would be a pretty good exercise with these fifteen or twenty items to see, number one, how quickly you can respond back to these things, and more importantly, how you're going to respond, and then I have a responsibility to talk to some of the people who I've consulted with and say, look, these were the questions that you presented in the last thirty days, they were prompt, they were very clear, and, and they brought clarity to your questions. I think if that were to happen, that would then set the precedent for any other objections or concerns that came forward.
Okay, absolutely.
So, I, I would make a motion, I don't even know how to do that, but make a motion that I would love to present these questions to you, Nina?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and request that you respond back to them by the next meeting, if that's possible, Joe.
Preferably plenty of time before, so you got time, you guys have time to understand.
Sure, and then see what those responses are, and I can then go back to several people that I've spoken with and say, look, these are responses that I've gotten quickly, efficiently, with clarity, and that might quash a lot of their concerns.
Well, we don't have to have a motion to get it to the questions, but if you want to table it, let's, motion to table it.
Well, I would make a motion to table this until next meeting, until some questions can be, to be answered.
To clarify, to, to clarify- Probably most of the answers, like you said, they are in there somewhere, but at least we get some clarification and-
And I think at that point, that would serve as an example, and then we can go, then at that point, I think there'd be no reason not to approve it.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I didn't hear you, Mr. Schmitzer, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. I was like, I didn't hear him.
You oppose or do you agree?
He agrees, I think, to table, right?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Nine out of ten.
Well, I couldn't hear it, I thought, what did he say? What did he say?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Um, if, since that's going to be predicated on that, if you want to make a motion to table the code part of it, or did you want to review those two?
The, the next thing.
The next thing, yeah.
Well, I, I would, I would also make a motion, because they're, they're basically-
The same, yeah.
They run concurrent with each other, correct?
Yes.
So, I would make a motion to pass that on till the next meeting for further clarification, based on the questions I'm going to ask.
Okay, and second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I am so sorry, Mr. Schmitzer, your head was down, so I couldn't hear what you said. All right.
Thank you.
Item number three, review and give staff direction regarding zoning code six one point one four, recreational vehicle prohibition of occupancy of vehicles and trailers for residential purposes and authorization of a temporary occupancy. So, um, with Joe's help, I went back over all of our notes that we took from the last time that we did the, um, we talked about the RV and the changes that the board wanted, or the commission wanted to see. It did go stalemate, it didn't go, really go anywhere, and then, as you can see, um, Ms. Giacominio, Councilmember Giacominio for Ward Two, um, has received multiple complaints about it, so we decided to bring it back for, um, further review and maybe direction you would like to see it to go into before we bring it to you for approval and, and things like that. Um, they are based, like I said, on the discussions that we had previously on the board regarding the recrea- recreational vehicles, and, um, so if there's anything that you would like to, um, see changed, deleted, or reviewed-
Would you like me to share some of the complaints?
Yes, ma'am, if you want to.
A lot of the complaints are coming out of, I got a big enough mouth. A lot, a lot of the complaints are coming out of Bakerville, although they are throughout Ward Two and other wards also. Uh, the concerns are, um, human waste, um, running out on property, uh, people living in them as a, a home, as a permanent home, instead of, you know, the, I was visiting my aunt, you know, Sally for, you know, a few days, um, them being parked blocking roads, um, them being not licensed, um, they don't have up-to-date tags, that's just a handful, and there's some that are actually, there's one in Lauren, um, Dad gum, above, you mature, what is that, Meadowville, that I sent you the pictures of? Windows are broken out of, you know, it's just, um, a mess, yeah, and it's like it's abandoned, but it's on property. So, not only is it an eyesore, they're worried about, um, inhabitants of either people that shouldn't be inhabiting them, or drawing possible, um, undocumented people, um, coming in and living in them, so, there's a lot of, of issues right now, so.
It will most definitely exacerbate an already bad situation, and to your point, it will create problems that have already established in many other cities, where you have an RV that appears to be somebody's, and the next thing you know, you've got all sorts of people living there, and then you've got a problem, is how the hell do you get them out of there? So, I would make a motion that we do not allow these vehicles without the proper permits and all the other things that are associated with it, that they should not be allowed to park their vehicles there, uh, and if they're in violation, they should be towed. I mean, I know in Old Bisbee, I now see right across from Kafka Coffee Shop, there's a guy there with a Ford F-350 that's got crap all over the place, and he just parks it there, and there's been other vehicles that are in the parking lots that, before you know it, they're there for a couple days, and obviously somebody's complained, and then it's like, you gotta get them out of there. It would be, just look at Seattle, okay?
Yeah.
As an example, and look at some of these other small towns that are growing in popularity, and it is a huge problem that we have a fiduciary responsibility to draw the line and a hard line on it as much.
Don't we have laws that we can enforce, rules, regulation regarding this?
Um, yeah, it's, what's-
Well, they're not very well-defined.
But they're not, yeah, and they're not very well-defined, so what, what we tried to do, the last time that the commission got together, is we pulled from several different cities and towns, so, um, but in here, we're going to address that, you know, no longer than four-day period, but they have to have a temporary, instead of a special use permit, I realized I only changed it in one place, it should have said, a temporary city of Bisbee permit, which will require them paying a fee that's non-refundable, and that if they are in violation of that, there is a fine, that they can be fined for that, where now there is not one, um-
Is there any provision in there that we can tow their vehicle?
Um-
Who pays for the vehicle, and where does it go? I don't believe Biddy Bisbee has the facilities for a tow truck to tow these things.
No, I don't know who toes, I don't know who toes in the city.
They generally call Barnett.
Thank you.
Barnett's one of the main ones, I think there's a rotation, um, Kevin used to be in it, but he doesn't tow anymore, but Barnett, and then there's another dude out of, um, Douglas and Sierra Vista.
You need someone like Barnett's that has the equipment-
Mm-hmm.
And, and, and to, to literally yank them out of there.
It's very expensive to tow an RV.
Oh, it's, by default, they charge you a lot because they can't, so, but that's, you know, that's part of the deterrent.
Yeah.
So, you know, if those things are not part of this code, I would make a motion to add these things.
Well, I don't need a motion, it's, this is just review and to give us direction, so what you want to see is a provision regarding towing, is that what you're saying?
Provision regarding impoundment.
Okay.
Which by default probably creates towing. Of course, that opens a whole nother door to, that's where people are living in the thing, and you go to tow it, where are these people going to go? Because you can't tow something with people in it. So, this, this again, we have a very litigious society this day and age.
I think, uh, the way you can start about it, because, yeah, you can just jump, gradually, uh, I don't know, through Joe, to someone, you give them a warning, you go and give them a warning, and you say, I have so many days, what have you, just to go and tow it, or just to go and approve them, or make more issue, more problem than, than solve it.
Yeah, no, Joe, just give them-
And then maybe most, most, most of the people will probably follow the rules and laws, and, and you'll have the, what's left over, if they are abandoned, that's a different issue, I don't know how you can deal with this.
Zoning code violations, Joe, people are given a notice of violation, and by code, they have thirty days to rectify it.
Right.
Which is very reason, extremely reasonable-
Right.
On our part.
How do we shorten that to five days?
We can't.
Can't do five days, you know?
We have to go by the-
Everything, everything that's in the zoning code is given thirty days.
You can just shoot, you know? If you want to park your RV, RV, you must get a permit.
Well, that's what is says in here.
How much is that permit?
It's got, the permit itself, I, we looked at several cities and towns, and, um, we went with two hundred dollars, and it's non-refundable.
Is that per day?
So, everything that's in red?
No, that's for four, yeah, everything that's in red is what would be added. Um, right now, our code says seventy-two hours, um, we said that it could, uh, be four days, no longer than four days, and it's short of seventy-two, huh?
And, and no, currently, no cost.
At, right, at, right now, there's no cost, and they're just parking it, and what happens is when they get told that people are complaining, they move it for a couple of days, and then it comes right back, and then they do it again, but this way, we will, there are, there is now, there's not a fine, and that, um, that was something that was asked to be implemented into by the commission the last time you discussed it, um, so we looked at other cities and towns and what they find, and it was two hundred and fifty dollars.
Remember, you guys mixed things up, if it's on a person's property, there's nothing you can do, if it says property.
Correct.
There's nothing, you can't just go, that's, the only, the only area that you can violate, it's a public area, but if somebody has a piece of land and has it, or has it in his driveway or in his garage, that's not, that's, that's not up to us.
But Mel, I do have authority on private property, and if I don't have pri- I don't have authority on the public property, the police do take care of that, but my authority is on the private property.
Right.
So, uh, if they, if they are living in it, or they are not living in it?
I give legal notices for that.
They're not allowed to live-
If they have all the, the, I mean, if they're living on it, if someone has a motor home or whatever, uh, uh-
Currently, they're allowed three, they're allowed thirty days out of three hundred and sixty-five.
If they have their own private land?
On their land, with, with a city, with a city of Bisbee, um, valid permit.
Okay.
Correct, but this is just with the ones that are being parked, um-
And, but we have problems with people doing that.
Right, we do, we have problems with people doing both of them.
And they're not getting permits, and they're living, they want to live more than thirty days, right?
So, what we're trying to do is to make sure that they get their permit, and then if they don't follow the rules, then there is a fine that they pay.
Especially if they're sewer and, yeah, they don't have probably a prob-
They usually are hooked up indoor, indoor.
Right.
Yard hook.
It's sewer.
Oh, okay.
Joe, correct me if I'm wrong, but any type of, um, motor home or movable home, um, if it's longer than thirty days and they continue to live in it, they have to remove the tires, and they have to make it permanent, is that not true?
They have to, they have to not live in it.
Yeah, so they can't live in it, okay.
Correct.
Unless, unless you're, if you're like working on your property, then you have, that gives you, that gives you a right to, to stay.
Okay, no, I, I know-
Taking the tires off, won't you?
Okay, I know one of the, one of the concerns, or one of the big, many concerns, is these people, they have motor homes like in, in their, their driveway or like right-of-way, and there's one in Coe Road, um, what's the rural name? Cochise Road, Cochise Road, sorry, getting old here, um, and there's been suspected drug trafficking, that's one of the other issues, and this trailer is continually, people in and out, and in and out, and, um, and it's causing, for better words, fear in the neighborhood because of the element that's around it. Yeah, and so, people are asking, people are afraid to say anything, but they're asking on the town level, what can be done, how can that be removed, how can it be stopped? Um, you know, you call the, the police, but it's like, what jurisdiction? And that's the other thing, what power do they have? And that, that's another concern.
That's not public, too.
It's one thing to park a trailer-
Not private, you can't do that.
It's another to actually habitat in a trailer-
Mm-hmm.
On your property.
Correct.
So, is that defined here?
The-
Because to your example, if somebody wants to park their trailer there, you can establish the fact that, why do you have the electric hooked up? Why do you have the dump station hooked up? Okay? If you were going to do that, it would be for maybe-
Six-fourteen key.
Thank you, forget what I said.
Yeah, no, it's in there about the thirty days, we just don't have-
So, really, the difference-
They're supposed to fill out one for thirty days.
Is that on your jurisdiction, both Joe and Javier, that you guys gotta add another thing to your, your plate, have you gotta babysit these guys, or does that something to do with the police?
They do.
And, and we don't have enough teeth to use, either, but, you know, we also, you guys, in the zoning code, you, you have, you have authority over, um, parking and those kind of things, that, that there probably should be something against camping on, on public property, that if, you know, so that these people who are parking in the ri- or camping in the right-of-way, that, that, we can't do anything about that, but at least the police could do something.
They can't do anything.
If it's on public, you cannot-
The nine circuit court ruled that out.
Oh, okay, so, so Joe cannot do anything if it's on public, but it's on private, this way, you, you, you just picture, the police, if somebody has parked his car on public and violation, then-
The police take care of that, yes.
Okay, so that's-
So, could it not be a catch-all through the city of Bisbee? That city of Bisbee does not allow parking of RVs on public streets?
No, you can, you can park it on your, on your, on your property, but not on public. On the public, I think the police have-
Yeah.
They have to, you have to, to call the police. But the problem is with that, what they try to skirt around is, they call the police, they move it, but they move it for twenty-four hours, and then they bring it right back.
Yeah, they have to move it twelve inches.
Right, or twelve inches, or however long.
If it's on public.
On public, yeah.
You referenced, uh, item D.
G.
No, D, it's unlawful to park a recreational vehicle or trailer on any public street except for the purposes of loading and unloading, that's Article D is in that.
Oh, okay, yes, sorry, I thought he was talking about the thirty days and the G, yeah.
But to your point, is that if they move it twelve inches, okay, then they have another twenty-four hours, so they just roll it back.
They roll it, and roll it, and roll it, until-
Roll, and roll, and roll, so-
Well, let's write it up so they can't do that.
So, that's, yes-
Write it up so they can't do that.
Um-
Can we write it so that that's prohibited, I mean?
Well, I just put in here on D, I wrote in there for D, it was unlawful to park a recreational vehicle.
That's period, right?
I, right, I didn't give it a specific timeframe, I just said it's unlawful to park a recreational vehicle or trailer on any public street except for the purposes of loading and unloading.
And Nina, that was boilerplate taken from, from, from another municipality?
Yep, absolutely. Yep, absolutely.
Can I suggest that in our case, there might be some clarification as whether they can park in public parking lots or not?
Okay, clarification for public parking lots? Most public parking lots, like Walmart, has a time limit. Yeah. So, that's...
Yeah, it was a huge problem up in North Dakota, where these guys don't have affordable housing, and they're just literally, the parking lots are filled with fifth wheels. And it just creates this whole little cottage community, and the next thing you know, you've got 100 of them, and it's like, you know, they're tapping into the light bulbs, I mean, you name it. So, I'd like to see a little bit more teeth in this, if we could.
I believe D, though, actually, Joe, I believe C, D, and E straight came out of the state statute. I think this was referenced.
Yeah, that's right.
It's came straight out of the state statute.
Perfect, then.
That's C, D, and E?
Yeah, that came straight out of the ARS 33-2102.
So, so D, when APS comes to change a pole out, and unloads their backhoe off the trailer, as soon as the backhoe has been removed, then they have to move the trailer off the street? That ain't going to happen.
But that's different than a...
Yeah, that's different than a recreational.
It says, "Or any trailer".
But the trailer means a travel trailer.
Okay, that's more travel trailer than...
I mean, of course, we're getting into...
I will make sure on the statute, but I'm pretty sure it referenced travel trailers. I'm sorry, Mr. Abell.
No, I was just saying to your point, Mike, I mean, how many words do you put in here? Traveler, trailer, fifth, is it a fifth wheel, or is it a travel trailer, or is it a car carrier? I mean, the next thing you know, the basic concept is, look, you're parking in the street, you're living in here, get out.
Okay, well, then we're talking about living, then.
Yeah, well, that's...
Living is the, is the primary, you're...
Inhabiting.
You're inhabiting, on a public street or a public parking lot, and that is prohibitive. Do we have the support of the Bisbee police on this?
Well, I think it'd have to be in our code first, before they could have teeth with it. Right, Joe?
Should we not, before we put it in our code, should we not have a conversation with the police, so that the police can give us some guidance, so that it's in, it's in the same realm that the police say, "Well, if you put this, this, and this into it, now we can really take some action"?
Okay, so what I can do is, I can add the clarification that you wanted, and the impound thing, and then what I will do is, I'll give it to the police chief and ask that he give input.
Sure.
On...
What are their laws?
What are their, what they have to go through?
What can they enforce, and what...
Right.
And their accommodation on that, or support that.
What will they enforce?
Is there any reference to, or can there be any reference to somehow, I get, not going to say control, but the human waste factor? I mean, that is an issue also.
That goes without saying, because any RV trailer...
And in the statute on here, it says, yeah, in the statute, it addresses that. It says recreational vehicle space means a parcel of land for rent that has been designed to accommodate a recreational vehicle and provide the required sewer and utility connections.
Because for your clarification, you just can't take your gray water or black water and open up the clean-out, and you, well, you're not allowed to do it.
Yeah, I know.
And so, if you see that, that gives the zoning or the building official, that is unknown, and that you cannot dump your gray water or black water into a clean-out on your property.
We've had, we've had probably, we've had a few, yeah, and that's the problem, too, these people don't care.
Well, that gives, though, the City of Bisbee, aside from the police, that unto itself is a code violation, and then that has some merit. You can't do this. So, you know, there's an RV parked right across from the golf course, go on down there. Okay, oh, go. So, it goes both ways, you guys, we can enforce, give you guys some extra teeth via the code. We can also incorporate via the local police jurisdiction, get some feedback from them, and have an overlap. They think they're going to skirt the issue on zoning. Guess what, you're not skirting the issue with the police, and so, the police, again, use that word, trump. You know, this, and now you've got...
It's okay as long as it's a verb.
So, now you've got some coverage. So, I don't know how to say that in a motion, I'll let you guys do it.
Oh, no, I don't need a motion, it's just review, and you gave us, gave me direction, so that's what I'll put in there.
I think everyone agrees here. You're going to start to see, especially as the weather changes, you're going to start to see more and more of these folks in cities across the United States, where they're just cruising along and say, "You know what, I'm going to park and live here for the next 30 days on the street".
But we spend, we spend a lot of time dealing with these complaints, and, you know, it spills over, it spills over to the council members, too, but we get, we get a lot of complaints, and we wind up, and we don't have a lot, we don't have, many times, we don't have a good way to deal with them. We'd like to have, we'd like to have better...
The police, they're not going to take you guys seriously. The police, well...
Joe, what Javier did, very good job.
You can define what is the police's responsibility, and what is the police's responsibility.
When the police come hacking out a trailer, I assure you, because they have dogs in there, and the dogs show up, they're going to get out of there really quick.
And the police for the public, that makes sense. So, undefined, you know, as part of the thing, we define what's the police's, and what's his responsibility.
But it also gets you that.
You know, with reference to the wording of D, where it says, "Unlawful to park recreational vehicle or the trailer", recreational vehicle is defined above, under Section A, where it includes the camping trailer, the motorhome, the pod trailer, the travel trailer, so you don't even need that, the word trailer in there, recreational vehicle is defined above.
Well, I, the only reason I left trailer in there is because trailer's already mentioned before I changed that, but that is something I can take out. So, I can remove trailer from that when we're doing the update of it.
I'm confused.
Okay.
Under G, properly licensed and registered recreational vehicle, temporarily occupied by a guest or visitor, this is what I'm questioning, on residential property, does not exceed 30 days per calendar year, or 30 days. Consecutive, that's the same. So, if I have company come and visit, and they're driving an RV, and they can park it in my driveway or the side of the house, do they need to pay $200?
No, no.
No, that's your problem.
Okay, but then, under H, it says, "For any temporary occupancy of a recreational vehicle on the residential property", it goes right into number five, where it says, "For anything over the 72 hours or extend over a four-day period", I, to me, that's...
Well, the what's in black, it was already in the code.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, so, I mean, if we want to define that better, I can, if that's what you are saying. I just want to make sure that's what we're saying.
Well, I think five contradicts G.
Okay.
If you guys can critique this a little bit, and give us some feedback, it'll give us a really good place to start, because it's in your ballpark, and we're just throwing some things out there that you guys can swing out.
So, what would this, what would this, tell me number five, what would that pertain to versus G? How are those two different sentences? So that I can, I mean, I can look at the wording, too.
Five as opposed to what?
Uh, G.
Yeah, in 61.4C5 is what she's talking about, and then the 30-day, which is B, actually, on the original...
Current code.
Current code, it's B and C on the current code. I just moved it down in this code, in the other code. Because in the current code, it does, B is already there, it says, "Properly licensed and registered vehicle", like she said, "Not to exceed 30 days per year", that location does not exceed 30 days in any one continuous time period. And then it's C, it says, "For temporary occupancy", and then five is, "For any such occupancy that will exceed 72 hours", so...
I guess it's temporary occupancy versus guest or visitor.
Oh, yeah, I'm thinking so, right, Joe? How do we, you say how we define that?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the difference, I think, that was what you were asking.
We need to combine those two.
Or something, yeah.
Another question is that, what would be the detriment to Bisbee if you just had a catch-all, if you banned all RV parking on the street?
Well, I don't think you can entirely ban it, because, because they're licensed vehicles, and it's a public street.
If they're living there, and you're not, you can park...
Different world, yeah, not living.
I'm just, I'm just trying to think this through, is that RVs parked on the street take up valuable parking, which is limited in Old Bisbee, for example, okay? There are plenty of places where they can park an RV. They can park it in the parking lot and pay, they can park it in the RV over by the golf course, but they're not allowed to park an RV on the street.
And they're...
Whether they're living in it or not, you can't park the RV on the street.
The D portion of the Arizona statute.
No, you have, you have a visitor, you can't just go like this. You have a visitor that's coming for the day, he needs a place to park.
Go with parking lot, pay.
Maybe, look, we have a parking lot in Old Bisbee, the guy closed it down for now, and you have visitors here for the day, they're driving, going through, they can park. I mean, you can't just go all, you know, nuclear here.
No, no, that's why I posed the question.
You know, somebody's coming for the day, he's parking.
Also put the caveat that, no, overnight.
Yeah.
Or a day pass. I'm also looking at additional revenue for the City of Bisbee, is that if you want to park your RV on the street, would you...
Who's going to enforce this, Mike? You're going to create, you know, you have to create laws that are enforceable, that are doable. You can just sit here and just say whatever comes to our head, and create, you have to have somebody to enforce it. If you make a law or rules, you better have some enforcement, otherwise it becomes another law, and it's useless.
But it's a start someplace, it's, at least it's...
Somebody's driving to town, they come here for the day, they park, like everyone, like he said, it's, he has a license, he's paid his license, he's paid his fees, he's paid his... He can, and that's what he has, he's driving, and he's continuing to New Mexico, he's continuing somewhere else. Spend half a day here, I'm going to, you know, harass him and go after him.
No, but if he comes in and parks for the day, part of the requirement is you've got to get a $100 parking permit, and you can stay there for overnight.
Who's going to do that?
Talking tourists, though.
Right, that's why, and I don't want to just, and I don't want to discourage tourists, you're right, so...
And some people are, you know, vans, the...
The Sprinter vans, right.
I mean, they park on the street.
No, and they spend money. Again, that's why I just want to throw it out.
I mean, come up with something that's enforceable, that's doable, but I think we're starting with the two things, with the public, with the private, and we're defining those, and we'll go from there. If something else in the future, we are able to do it, perfectly can, but I think, like, we can't even do this. Let's just do what we can do now.
Okay.
And it can't be decided, Mike.
Yeah, that's why it was just review and give direction. So, tomorrow morning, what I'll do is, I'll send out an email to the commission, and just ask for any additional input, and then that way, I can try to get a new rough draft ready, and see if the police chief can give his input about what is enforceable for him. If that's okay.
On a side note, can I ask a question? Is there any, and I couldn't find anything, is there any rules against parking of commercial vehicles, especially in Old Bisbee? We've got a number of commercial vehicles that are rolling billboards.
Yes, it's in the zoning code, in the assigned section.
It's been happening, thank you, Mike, for bringing it up. I've noticed this, and it's been happening a lot. Some entities, they have their buses, and Johnny and I have been observing this, and it's been happening a lot, and thank you, Mike, for bringing it up.
They kind of got sneaky, too, because I think somebody said something, because the one, the one RV Bisbee or whatever, from his store...
But he keeps moving it, I'm like, you're right.
But we also have a contractor intent on parking his vehicles, and that's why you should work commercial vehicles.
You need to pay a visit, John, to downtown Bisbee, and see what's going on.
The problem is, they're taking up a lot of parking, too.
Yes.
And that's the major issue, because you have potential revenue from your tourists, and now they have no place to park.
And no place to park.
Because we have all these humongo vehicles that are advertising their business.
And that's been happening, it's true, and can you enforce this? Is this something that you are paying at?
I get a hold of people, I'll tell them about it.
Okay, but we've had, like you said, we have a couple of people that have been moving their cars all around.
But that would also be something that would fall under the chief of police.
Because he would be, he would be the one issuing tickets.
Because it's a public...
I'd issue notices of violation for that, on the zoning code, which...
Yeah, but it gives them 30 days to move, it gives them 30 days to move the pickup truck.
Yeah.
Or, excuse me, the dump truck.
Most of the people that I've dealt with in the past have been, have been very nice about it, most of them. At first, I say, you know, it's like, there was an electrical van that was over there in the parking lot for a number of months and stuff, and I said, "Come on, you've got to move that", and, "Well, it's not fair", "Well, okay, I did, I'll do it", and so, that, you know, most of the time, it works like that.
And the silver-bread truck moved after you, Dust Diner moved after you requested it, too.
Yeah, they did.
They were very good about it, but there's...
Okay.
There's, there's a couple out there.
Well, and that's why we need to be consistent with enforcing it.
Yeah, those, I think, you know, there are not too many, and I think you can enforce, just make sure that somebody's driving through Old Bisbee, and it happens mostly.
But it changes the ambiance of our town, to have these advertising vehicles, and it's not the best.
Yeah.
I agree. When you see those, Mel, can you drop me a line?
I would, I would.
But I see them, too, and I take care of them sometimes outside, you guys.
Good.
Any more direction, or we're a good jumping off point? The only staff comments I have is that the parcel, the percentage of parcel coverage, I'll have something for the board in January, just to review and give direction of what you would like to see. We talked about it last time, and I just didn't have the time to get it on this agenda for review. Joe, did you have anything else?
I don't.
All right, commissioners, did you have any comments? Okay, do we have any future agenda items?
So, basically, if you don't have them today, they can send an email to you, and...
Yeah, they do, yeah. All right, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
A second?
Second.
All those in favor? We're adjourned.